Okay, it's seven o'clock and I'll call this meeting to order of the Urbana City Council Committee of the whole. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons? Here. Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson? Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor pressing.
Okay, are there any additions to the agenda? Is there a staff report or any staff reports at this time? Okay, if not, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting or are there any? Okay.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
And are there any corrections to those minutes? I have one addition to those minutes, I guess. I just wanted to have the five names of this, of the lifeguards included in the minutes. That's Lauren Grubb, Carolyn Hockel, Demetrius Jackson, David Jen, and Olivia Hintzus.
I'll second that.
Do we vote separately on that? Okay, all in favor of those corrections.
Aye.
Now do we have to vote on the minutes? Okay, now all in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Is there any public input? I have one from Carletta Donaldson.
It's Carletta Donaldson, 406 Brookings Drive, Urbana. Take a moment of silence for the many lives lost in the last week, including the family of Owens Funeral Home owner and veteran Jim Yost. I did mention to the Urbana Fire Chief, but I'd like to publicly give congratulations and a big hurrah for the employees there and their commitment to being indefinitely looking the best capable to do their jobs, working out together. I thought that was a good story this morning on the news. I flipped back and forth, so I can't remember if it was on four or eight, but I'm sure you can go online and catch that. Let's hope that the fever catches to all, other departments, city residents, and of course more. I'm also excited about the presence of U of I students working with the City of Urbana, different departments within the City of Urbana. I'm sure there's got to be some kind of savings there that we don't normally hear about. Are there some figures somewhere on just what we save and where that money goes within the budget when we do use some of the students for internships and things like that? I don't know if that's Libby. I know Libby has a few students in her department. Is that something that can be answered or no? I'm sorry? Okay, okay. Again, I just want to thank the council for all that you do. Stay encouraged and continue to be blessed. Thanks.
Thank you. Just no other public input? Are there, is there any input from council members? Diane?
I just wanted to give a shout out to the public work crews who once again went out this weekend to deal with the aftermath of the storm. And I know the trees in Urbana took a real beating and just expressed our appreciation for all the hard work that they're still doing cleaning up after that.
Thanks. And Charlie?
Actually, I was going to ask Bill Gray and/or Mike Brunk to give the official policy on picking up tree limbs and clearing sewer grates and all that sometime this evening. Maybe now's the best time while Diane's mentioned it. I know we had, we had a couple of questions in the Wuna neighborhood that Bill and I tried to answer best we could.
If there's private property, damaged trees, limbs, that sort of thing, there's a couple options and Mike can elaborate, but generally that's the homeowner or property owner's responsibility to remove. And that can be done via perhaps calling a waste hauler, depending on the volume, or the lawn service. Sometimes homeowners and lawn services, they may help remove that. Or you physically via a pickup truck or a vehicle, take it to our landscape recycling center for disposal. Those are generally the three options. Maybe a fourth option, if it's smaller things, I know I personally like to chip it and keep it on site. So if you have a, you know, chipping machine too. If it's parkway-related damage, we asked again if there's smaller limbs, I think generally less than six inch diameter or smaller, you know, that the homeowner would help us out. And again, bundle it per the hauler or whatever specifications. Usually it's like four foot length and 50 pounds or less, that sort of thing. And you get a tag or you contact them or again, your pickup truck and haul it out to the landscape recycling center. Larger tree limbs, I know our crews have been working since the storm hit. Many trees are down. Mike can elaborate if you want to know more about that. This is at least our fourth storm of 50 or more mile per hour wind gusts. And it's unusual, but that's about all I can say is it's been an unusual year for the number of high winds we've had here. And as far as inlets are concerned, that is a city public works responsibility. However, we do appreciate adjacent homeowners that may remove the leaves and twigs and debris on that inlet structure to clear them so the water can subside. Now, in the heat of a two inch downpour in 30 minutes, you know, every street in the city is going to accumulate water because we don't have that capacity built into the system by design. But there's many inlets that may clog with material and that pounding will stay for, you know, minutes, hours, what have you, until a crew picks it up or homeowners help us out. So if homeowners want to adopt their inlet in front of their home, we're all for that. Merely, you know, be careful, but remove that material, put it on top of the parkway. If they want us to remove that material collected in the parkway, we'll go by and drive by and pick it up, you know, that's fine. Or if they want to dispose of it themselves, that's great too, but we'll remove that material that collects on the inlet, but that's helpful in the middle of a storm. And do you want more details as to what we responded to? Because Mike was out there. I mean, he-
The follow-up question would be, are there, as the crews are picking up the limbs and stuff, are they clearing up, cleaning up the drains too where they can?
Different crew now. I mean, Arbor is doing a lot of the tree clearance and pickup operations, does do that. We, every storm, you know, we somewhat go on alert about clearing inlets. And we'll always, especially a storm like this, we will have people in on those storms. And I don't know to what number we have, but we have inlet patrol, if you will, and we get calls from police, the public all over the place, emails. And we'll go out and remove those clogged drains on the spot and, yeah, the public should let us know. If, if there is drains that are plugged or clogged with material, we will definitely respond immediately to do that sort of thing. So, but that's usually two different divisions get involved with that. Now, if an Arbor guy sees a clogged drain, he or she may go ahead and do that. Conversely, operations will help clear the street, you know, of large limbs so that the road is passable. But generally speaking, Arbor will be the division responsible for the large limb, tree limb pickup of parkway, city trees. Operations will be in charge of, I'll call it inlet patrol, but cleaning and clearing inlets.
Okay, thanks. Carol?
I just have one more question. On a tree that has fallen, but consistently falls, the same tree, big branches fall from, how do we get them on a tree trimming, cutting? It's in the right of way?
Okay, when we have problems with trees, citizens can call me. We go out and investigate the tree. We do what we call a tree risk assessment. And then we will rank that accordingly and put on a maintenance schedule accordingly. So if we can abate the hazard by pruning, that's what we do. That would be less work. We try to salvage the tree. If we can't, if it's a tree that continues to fall apart, a poor species, if you will, with poor structure, then we put it on the removal list.
Okay.
We happen to have about 165 trees left on our removal list that we've discovered from our inventory. And of course, we get some done, new ones come in, and those are ranked. Some are such that they're listed as a removal in our inventory, but they're kind of on hold for the next season, if you will, because we think they'll stand or they're safe for their, for a year's time. But yet they're a tree we can't really repair and we think is going to continue to fall apart. But, so there's, even in the tree prunings that we have, there are a variety of what we call hazard rating levels. So we will put those on our, what we call priority list, whether it's a removal or a prune, and they're in order of the most dangerous first. And I'll add on the storm pickup, how we handle that when we, especially when we get called in on overtime, whether that be in the evening or on the weekend. It was both this weekend. We will clear streets for emergency vehicle and passage, and we won't necessarily clean up the material unless it's easier for us to do at the time that we're there than to move it. So we move a lot of material, whether it's private trees or city trees, out onto parkways to be picked up during the regular work week. And that's so we can focus our attention on situations that are hazardous, to try to abate that hazard to make things safe. We had a few this weekend that we actually had to secure and barricade off overnight. We had one really interesting situation where we had to lash the, a treetop blew out and it was on a four-story apartment building and lodged in the tree. So we lashed the parts together to keep them up there, and then we barricaded the street and the sidewalk off. And we brought in a crane the next day to take care of that.
Okay, thank you.
And one last thing on the brush pickup in storms like this, we, we really need the citizens' help to, to help us clean the smaller stuff up. But we will come out for branches that are three inches in diameter or larger. We really have to draw, try to draw the line with 15,000 tree sites and a handful of us guys trying to cover it so we don't get the calls for the real small stuff. But we, we like the citizens to try to help us out with those kinds of things, smaller branches, much like they do with leaves in the fall.
Okay, great. And Dennis?
So Mike, so if you did have a sizable enough branch come down from your tree and you put the debris on the parkway, should the citizen call the public works department or do you just go by and do you scout out the neighborhoods?
No, they should call us. If they have something that's too large and that, that's the breakpoint that we try to define is something that's too large for citizens to cut up and handle themselves with a handsaw. And so we will say generally that's about a three inch diameter or larger, and they need to call us because we don't send out crews to, to network the entire neighborhood. So it'd help to call us. Some folks may see us cleaning up private debris. When a private tree falls across a sidewalk or a street, and it's quicker for us just to throw it through the chipper than to cut it up and move it, or there's no place to really put it, and it takes a lot of effort. We'll chip that up and we'll haul it away, but it has to be easier for us to do.
Any other questions for Mike or Bill? Thank you. Anything else from council?
Yeah, I was going to give an update on UC2B and ITV3. Couple little things didn't quite get wrapped up this weekend and today. So we have a big board meeting tomorrow. I'll have a much better report next week, but a couple of key things. The, a bit of missing information on, on the connection between UC2B's fiber and statewide fiber has been determined, that paperwork is in the works. It's been signed by all the appropriate parties and now just, we need to get it over to ITV3. Once ITV3 has that officially, they can begin pursuing a franchise agreement for television coverage. Their intention is to, to offer triple play. They were, they are eminently releasing the neighborhood engineering work. It's going, it's, I was hoping it'd be done today, but they're, they're doing the beta testing on the, on that, on that material. So that'll, that'll be live in the next couple of days. And that'll, that'll really kick off the marketing efforts. And UC2B is probably going to help with the marketing, working with ITV3 on, on developing a really good marketing plan. And folks should be getting a letter. Those who have already signed up should be getting a letter sometime in the next week or so telling them what to do next.
So the neighborhood engineering work is the maps that they would be creating with, that would define the neighborhoods?
Right, yeah, those defined neighborhoods and they're, they're trying to get 150 to 300 households in, in each of those defined neighborhoods. And the idea is that they will start hooking people up, they'll start building in those neighborhoods with 50% commitment of some kind to it. So, so having those maps is pretty important.
Thanks.
So a lot, a lot should happen this week and I'm hoping that by next Monday I'll have an even more elaborate report.
Carol?
I just wanted to ask if Mr. Smythe would include in the board meeting the question about the television franchise agreement, if the cities of Urbana-Champaign will benefit from a franchise agreement? And will this come to our cable television commission here either in the city of Urbana-Champaign? But there's a, the big thing around franchise agreements that we should certainly consider.
Yeah, I think their intention is to follow the framework of our current franchise agreements with tweaks is what they told me, tweaks appropriate to their technology. So that'll, that'll be in the hands of our attorneys hopefully sometime very soon.
Okay, thanks.
Jim has a grin on his face. He's looking forward to it, I think.
Okay, first up is ordinance number 2014-07-067, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code Chapter 3, Section 343, increasing the number of Class C licenses for Freedom Oil Company, 1812 North Cunningham. Yes, Mike?
As a local license holder of the City of Urbana, state law equipment participating in this discussion, saw or refused himself, and I didn't turn on my microphone.
So Mr. Madigan has recused himself from this discussion. Charlie, were you going to present this?
Yeah, on behalf of the mayor, this is just a switch. Freedom Oil currently has a Triple B license, wants to go to Class C so they can better compete with their neighboring businesses that have Class C licenses.
Recommendation to City Council for approval.
It's been moved by Ammons and selected by Smythe. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next is resolution number 2014-07-040R, a resolution approving the purchase of Fanfair for the permanent collection of public art of the City of Urbana. Lisa Hattidorian and Pat Simpson.
Good evening. Lisa Hattidorian, Public Arts Coordinator, Pat Simon, Chair of the Public Arts Commission. We're here to ask you to consider a resolution to purchase the sculpture Fanfair by Sean Warren for the permanent collection of public art for the City of Urbana. This is the granite sculpture that you see up on your screen. Has five types of granite in it, in different colors, and the artist is, was born in DC and now is at Bowling Green University in Ohio and Chair of the Sculpture Department. The Public Art Program and the Public Art Commission administers a program entitled Urbana Sculpture. And this program was created in 2010, and it's a series of sculptures that are placed in key points in Urbana, mostly downtown Main Street and Phyllo Road, and they rotate every two years. So in working on our sculpture choices for 2014, 2016, we knew that Fanfair, which is on the northeast corner of Race and Elm, out in the little mini park outside of Iron Post, was going to be renewed for another two years. It's been installed in this location for four years since 2010. And in the past four years since it was installed, it's become a much valued and integral part of the downtown landscape and streetscape. It's a good fit for its location in the terms of its size and the type of sculpture that it is. And we've heard comments that it amplifies the character of the neighborhood and beautifies downtown, and it's well liked by the community. And in your packet, I included three letters of support from business community leaders showing their support for the acquisition of Fanfair. Paul Worth of Iron Post, Matt Cho, and Celeste Coate of the Library. So the artist stipulated that with this next leasing period from 2014 to 2016, that would be the last leasing period that he would want for the sculpture. So it would either have to be purchased by the city or it would go back to the artist. So following that, the artist emailed me with a generous offer of purchase for the sculpture. So the financials for this piece are as follows. The original value of the sculpture was or is $15,000. And after four years of leasing, with $4,500 paid in leasing fees to the artist, that purchase price went down to $10,500. The new asking price from the artist is $4,500, which is a savings of $6,000, about 57%. In terms of funding, we had already put aside $2,000 in the budget for leasing for this particular sculpture. So that leaves $2,500 left in funding needed. And looking at the budget, we found $2,500 in Public Art Projects TIF and TIF and Converred funds to make up the difference, and the funding will not affect the $75, $75,100 that was passed by City Council for the public arts budget. So just to summarize, the original purchase price was $15,000. If council approves the purchase of the sculpture, then $9,000 will have been paid for this particular sculpture over a four-year period, $4,500 previously and $4,500 now. So the Public Art Commission unanimously voted to acquire Fanfair on their July 8th meeting, and both the Public Art Commission and staff recommend that City Council approve the resolution to purchase Fanfair by Sean Warren for the permanent art collection of the City of Urbana.
Thanks. Are there any questions for Lisa?
Just one.
Carol?
The $2,500 that you located in Public Art Project TIF and the second part of that, what would that be used for if not this project?
We don't have it allocated yet.
Dennis?
Yeah, well, I think, I think this is a, a good purchase for the city. I believe it's, it's a very popular piece. I think it does fit in really well, especially in its location that it's had, that it's been placed. And obviously, we're getting a good quality of material here for a very good price. The price is right, I think, and I really appreciate the artist being willing to cooperate with the city to make it more reasonable to purchase. And since the money is located in the TIF and you have that available to you to expand, I don't see any reason that we should delay, but perhaps I'd like to just make a motion that we accept that, that resolution 2014-07-040, approving the purchase of Fanfair as a permanent part of the art collection of Urbana, be approved and sent to the City Council with a vote of approval.
It's been moved by Roberts, selected by Smythe, to send resolution to City Council for approval. Any further discussion? Mike?
So just a couple of questions. Who determined the original value of the sculpture?
The artist himself.
Okay, so, so the $15,000 is what the sculptor himself thinks it's worth?
That's what he would charge if he was selling it through a gallery or-
Okay.
So that's the value.
That's what he would ask?
Yes.
All right. But now he's asking a steeply discounted price after the city's only paid-
$4,500.
Whose expense would it be to remove the sculpture?
If it were to leave town?
If the city decided not to, if the city decided to let the, let the lease expire without purchase?
The artist's expense. He would take it back on his own expense.
Okay, is that maybe part of the reason for the discount? Because he doesn't want to deal with the expense of removal?
No. He's actually folding up his artistic practice, and I didn't really want to dig too deep, much deeper with him on that. So he's not going to be an artist anymore and wants to sell his work.
Okay, then has anybody suggested to him that we'll just allow it to remain here without any further expense to him, without any remuneration at this point?
Well, I asked him that. He said, even though he does want to sell the work, he's, he's, he's not going to give it away for free. If we do lease it for the next two years, he still would let us either to purchase it, and if not, it would go back to him.
At his expense?
Yes.
Okay. My final question is you've allocated $2,000 this year, when in fact, well, without seeing the lease, your average annual expense has been 1,100 and, I'm sorry, 1,250 a year? 1,125 a year, actually. So why would you allocate 2,000 in this budget year when 1,125 has been your annual lease?
That's how the leasing structure works with the pricing.
Is it an escalating lease?
No, it's been $2,000, pretty standard. For, say, 2010 to 2012, it was $2,000. 2012 to 2014, it was $2,000. 2014 to 16 is $2,000.
It's two years.
But the city?
It, it goes in two-year increments. So we pay him the money for the lease upfront.
We've leased the sculpture for four years and spent $4,500, but you're saying it's $2,000 a year? That doesn't add up to me.
The $500 is an installation fee that we gave him.
So we've leased it for two years at this point?
No, we've leased it for four years, 2010 to 2014. And we paid him $4,500. The original, part of it is, it's the original contract that we drew up with this particular artist. It was $2,000 and then a separate sort of honorarium that we gave him for administration and installation. So that's where that extra $500 comes from for the $4,500.
So we've paid him $4,500 and we're obligated for another two years at 2,000 a year?
2,000 for two years. So it would be like it's 1,000 for one year and 1,000 for one year.
Okay, so it is 1,000 a year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But in turn, the contract states that it's, we pay them the $2,000 upfront.
For two years.
Well, maybe the staff report is just not very well worded because it says the amount of funds in FY 1415. So FY 1415 means two fiscal years? The way I would read that is-
No, I, that might be my way of writing it, but it's fiscal year.
That means two fiscal years, $2,000?
It means basically July 2014.
No, wait a second. No, am I wrong?
Was it a two-year lease? It has to be paid the first year?
We only do the leases of sculptures every other year, and we do it for two years. Is it that? So-
So that $2,000 represents two full years?
Yes.
Okay, it's just unclear in the memo.
Sure.
So that's why the math wasn't adding up to me.
Sure.
I'm not trying to belabor this.
Yeah.
Well, I understand, I do, I do believe that, that public art is very important. What I struggle with, though, is that we cannot meet our public works needs, we cannot meet our police needs, we cannot meet our fire needs, and I just, I cannot support, I cannot support spending money on art when we can't meet those core functions of government. I think ultimately, what would support a very robust public art program in Urbana would be a community that supports expansion of business. And we don't have that here, unfortunately. We are sorely lacking in having a positive business climate in this city. And if we did, you would see lots and lots of businesses that would have the ability to support outside of the tax structure of the city, a robust public art program. So I will be voting no for that reason, but not because I don't appreciate what you all do and appreciate the, the beauty of the sculpture. But I think the core services of the city should come first, and that would not include this.
Any other discussion? Dennis?
Yeah, I just wanted to go back to, I value the fact that the Public Arts Commission money supports permanent installation of tangible materials, art installation. I appreciate the more ephemeral presentations to music, music events and such, but I think that the, the greatest good can come from the arts commission when art is permanently brought to the community so that it can have enduring lasting appreciation. So that's one reason in particular that the purchase of a, of a fine sculpture in it that seems to match the right place and location, to me, has like the strongest, the strongest validity among the many options that we have to, to bring and embrace art into the community. Now, on the same hand, I, I really- Now, on the same hand, I, I really support, you know, you know, the local arts community musical programs. And I'm a real supporter of the Roots, the Folk and Roots Festival that's coming up too. And I've, I've advocated for that in the past. But also, the funds that are being used from the TIF district would be funds that would not be used for the purchase or the support of public services through the police, fire and, and Public Works Department. They would be different, they'd have to come from a different fund. And TIF money can't be used to employ policemen, so it's not exactly a two-for-one or one-for-one trade-off. If the money's here and it can be allotted for this, that's why I think that, you know, I'm, I strongly support this direction. And there's other, a few other pieces in the community I'd love to see retained as well. So in the future, bring us more of these options for permanent display. And, you know, and I, and I'll bide my time during, you know, the ephemeral moments of art that I think do have value sometimes, but because they're ephemeral, bring the community less, less long-lasting results. That's all.
Okay, thanks. Carol?
I just wanted to follow up on something that Mr. Roberts just said. This, this particular item in this particular TIF, this money can't be used for other things. Is that why it's designated Public Arts Project TIF? Is that where this code comes from? That's in the report here, L nineteen one thirteen to thirty-ten?
Yeah, basically, that's the code for the line item, and it is for projects in the TIF area.
It's for projects in the TIF area, but not necessarily for art projects in the TIF area?
No, it is for art projects.
It is, that's what I was trying to clarify. This is specifically for art projects in the TIF area?
Yes.
Thank you.
I guess I have one question, not really discussion. Is there a mechanism for businesses to contribute to purchase these kind of art sculptures?
Not at present. That's something I'd like to work on, and I'll be working hopefully with Jim on how we do that because it falls into fundraising structures.
Okay, thanks. Diane?
Couldn't they go through the Public Art League?
Or Forty North or...
Well, Public Art League places sculptures throughout the community.
They could, it, they wouldn't have to be a donation to the city, but yes, it could go that way.
Okay, thanks. Mike?
I have a question to counsel, actually. So what happens to unexpended TIF dollars at the expiration of a TIF?
If there are funds within the TIF fund at the expiration of the TIF district, those funds are either in whole or in part distributed pursuant to redevelopment agreements that provide for funds to be paid to developers if there are such agreements in place and if monies are owed. If there are any balances after that, they are distributed prorata to the local governments.
So in other words, TIF funds unexpended, the expiration of a TIF, after all contracts have been satisfied, are returned actually to the taxing districts to spend while they wish?
Yes, years later, but yes.
So I understand that these funds are not expendable at the current time, but upon the expiration of the TIF, they could very well go back to the core functions of, of local governments, which are the things that I set out in my earlier discussion.
Okay. Charlie?
I wasn't gonna address this, but I really think I need to counter something Mike said here. The, the issue is that we spend millions for public works, we spend millions for police, we spend millions for fire. We are meeting our obligations there and then some. We're talking about a quality of life issue here, public art is part of quality of life. And a few thousand dollars here and a few thousand dollars there to improve the quality of life improves the business climate that you think is negative in this community. I would disagree. We've turned that corner, you know, two thousand eight was a terrible year for everybody. We're on the rebound. Much of this country is on the rebound, I hope. And, you know, we've got, you know, businesses swapping out with almost no, no empty space in downtown, as an example. Now, that'd be great if we had that across every business sub, neighborhood in the, in the city. But, but we do have a good business climate right now. And I think, you know, spending a few thousand dollars for something that helps improve the atmosphere in downtown, helps make it a business, a, a neighborhood-friendly, a people-friendly place to walk, bike, stroll around, spend the evening. That's a good thing, and that's pro-business. So I support this.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any votes?
No.
That motion carries. Next up is Resolution number twenty-fourteen dash zero seven dash zero four two R. A resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a contract for professional services, Peckham, Geiten, Albers and Witz Incorporated. Brandon or, yeah, Brandon Boyes?
Good evening. I'm joined here with Mike Weber of PGAV.
Good evening.
Tonight, council is considering a resolution to enact a study to determine the feasibility of a new downtown TIF district in anticipation of the expiration of TIF District Number One, which is Urbana's oldest TIF district. Also, one of the older TIF districts in the state of Illinois. The attached draft agreement in your packet with PGAV would provide for the state mandated study and planning required to create a new TIF district in downtown. Staff is proposing this in accord with the Urbana City Council and Mayor Goals for twenty-fourteen through twenty-seventeen. The study will provide the city with the information that we need to develop the next generation of redevelopment incentives in downtown Urbana. And I just want to point out that later this year, the city will also be applying for a new enterprise zone, which will be another major item, setting forth development incentive opportunities and tools for many years to come. So we're in a stage of, that the actions we take in the next few months are going to have a lot to do with what happens in the next several years in our, in our business community and our development community. Staff, council approved forty-five thousand dollars in the budget in TIF District Number Two for this study. And the proposed contract with PGAV in your packet is expected to cost thirty-five thousand dollars. Staff is eager to start this work with PGAV, to start planning for this new tax increment finance district in downtown. It's an important tool. It's our most crucial tool in redevelopment, and there's much more to do in downtown. And we're excited about the opportunities that are emerging as the business climate improves and as we've entered into the intergovernmental agreement with MTD for a new downtown transit facility. Do you have any questions at this time?
Any questions for Brandon? Charlie?
Yeah, I say, Brandon, Mr. Weber, as we, as we go into this, I, I think back on the presentations you've made and some of the numbers that I've seen on, on the performance of TIFs one through four. TIF one has been the least performing TIF of those. I think two through four have done pretty well and, and, you know, really met the spirit of the state, you know, expanding and enhancing and, and doing good things for, for those districts. One has sort of, sort of been more a maintenance-type situation. How can we make TIF one more dynamic going forward?
Well, we'll, the study will, will span several months and, and tap the professional expertise of a lot of folks. So I don't want to presume that I have an answer in advance. But I think what you're saying is accurate, that TIF one includes some of our oldest, most historic properties that are the most expensive to redevelop. And investment in those properties doesn't result in property value increases in the same way that you see in, in TIF four, our best-performing TIF district, which is a lot of greenfield development out on the edge of town. So you, it's, it's a, it's a lower-hanging fruit. I think, I think the opportunity we have is that we are starting to build some momentum in downtown, especially on top of the conclusion of the redevelopment of, of the resurfacing and, and road diets on Main Street, Broadway, Race Street, the Boneyard. And we've had several notable new tenants on Main Street and some redevelopments of buildings. And we, staff is only expecting that to continue. So I guess that's what I feel is our best opportunity is, is the fact that we have momentum and we've upgraded the infrastructure. But I think there's a lot that could be added.
If I could just add a couple of points on that response. It's been our experience, older urban cores in downtowns throughout Illinois that have utilized tax increment financing is always a challenge because of the age. And it takes a lot of investment to upgrade an existing building. And you can put in a hundred thousand dollars into a building, yet it doesn't really affect the assessed value like it would be if you built, if you spent a hundred thousand dollars building a brand-new building. With that understanding, though, I think you have some new opportunities coming up to maybe do some mixed-use development, including this proposed metro station. If you could design it or attack it in a way to where it becomes a public-private investment, to where you can leverage some private taxable property as part of that new development, then the more private investment that you can leverage in the downtown, particularly with redevelopment, okay? Rehab is another thing that oftentimes doesn't generate a lot of increment. But on redevelopment projects such as new private redevelopment, the more you can leverage private investment, the more successful it's going to be. And I must say that you're, you've had a fair amount of success with your downtown TIF. It just doesn't translate into a lot of tax increment, unfortunately.
Diane?
I kind of want to follow up on what Charlie said, and I had basically the same question. I, I support the feasibility study and plan going, and the production of a plan for going forward. But I think an important piece of this is the retrospective analysis. What, what has happened in the past ten years, especially since this last redevelopment plan was written? I went back and read both plans for TIF one and TIF two today. And I think this analysis should include, you know, what are projects we set out to do? How many of those we accomplished, and if we didn't do them, why, and what can we learn from that? And there is quite a divergence from what's set out in this two thousand four plan. So if we're going to come up with another redevelopment plan, maybe we should make, try to make sure it's realistic for what we are actually able to do. My other question is, this two thousand four plan had included almost a million dollars for something called vocational training. And I, I'm not sure what that means, but that's one thing I'd want to see in this analysis. Did we actually do what we said we were going to do as far as vocational training and workforce education? Because that is actually a very important piece of economic development. And the third thing is, is as I look at the budget for this year and how we're spending our TIF dollars, is I'm very concerned about our reliance on TIF funds to pay salaries of our entire economic development staff as well as increasing reliance on TIF dollars for programs and services, not just, you know, redevelopment projects. So this, this reliance is, is kind of fostering a dependence on TIF as part of a permanent funding mechanism. I mean, TIF one is now thirty-five, thirty-four years old, so it's almost a permanent part of our function. So I would really like to reduce our reliance on, or at least talk about the pros and cons of relying on TIF to pay so much of our salary obligation because I really don't feel comfortable with that. And lastly, some of the projects, I would really like to, I'm looking forward to the discussion on our investment in the Landmark Hotel and the effectiveness of our expenditure there and what our options are in terms of recovering some of those dollars going forward. So those are where I am.
Did you want to respond to any of that? There wasn't really a question, I guess, okay. Carol?
I wanted to also just ask a, a couple of things. You mentioned in your opening comments that this was a mandatory requirement, meaning to hire a consultant to do this is mandatory by state? Is that...
No, the, the feasibility study and the redevelopment plan are the required components that we have to produce.
In order to be approved for a TIF?
Yes, in order to create one.
To, to create a new TIF. The other thing is I looked at, when I read the memo, I like to see along the lines of what Diane said is, what, what I see often in downtown is not necessarily growth, what I would consider growth, but exchanging. So one moves out, the other moves in, which doesn't create actually enough back into the increment finance district according to the description of what it's supposed to do. We don't necessarily see that playing out. And so all of these things that have come out of the TIF, outside of the infrastructure development stuff, which is the road mapping and things that we have to do to improve the infrastructure. But the investments in businesses, we just did a couple on Race and University that are newer. But what are our projections there? How, how is it that the public see this as a benefit as, as it is currently being operated? As opposed to simply infrastructure improvements? You know, you want to support business development, but we want them to stay in business once we give it to them, right?
Absolutely.
So how do we actually improve this usage as opposed to making it almost, as Diane said, a part of the budget? You know, budget cycle?
I just, I would add that staff does intend to do some additional analysis of the TIF districts and make that available to council prior to the creation of a new TIF district so that not only we can consider it in context, but we can look at past performance.
Can I just add an additional request to Brandon? Brandon, if you could, certainly the mayor could add this for us on the study session. It would be helpful for the public to really be able to understand what the purpose of a TIF is, how we've been using it, should we or should we not retire it, what are the benefits? I think people need to understand, this is a very complicated thing. So as we're talking TIF right now, even if I explain the words, the acronyms, I can't say I'm a hundred percent able to explain all of its usage, right? I think having a study session over this, once the report comes back, I think would help us to then really align this TIF with our, the City Council goals as opposed to kind of doing things as they come.
Thanks. Dennis?
One of the comments that was in the staff report was had to do with possibly merging or recombining or de-TIF-ing one part of the map and adding it to another. Can you explain that concept a little bit? Like how that would benefit or how that would recreate the, a new TIF? And would that basically eradicate TIF two if we were going to do that?
The concept here is that if we're going to study this downtown area, let's go ahead and take a look at a study area that includes other adjoining areas that haven't had the kind of investment that we had hoped for with TIF two. Of course, you have the Schnucks redevelopment in TIF two, which is a very good example of redevelopment projects. But there's other areas that haven't fared so well. And since that TIF district is getting fairly old itself, there's not a lot of years on the back end. It's hard to incentivize a private redevelopment project and not have enough years on the back end. So if we're going to do a new TIF, let's look at some of these other areas in TIF two and, and think about the strategy that we might, if we're going to go ahead and do a new TIF, do we want to include some of these adjoining areas and give it a fresh life to where we have a greater capability of incentivizing private investment for redevelopment in TIF two as well? In order to do that, you would have... TIF II as well? In order to do that, you would have to take the property out of TIF II. And we'll find out after the study gets going, if we wind up cannibalizing too much of TIF II, maybe TIF II goes away altogether. Or a portion of TIF II stays in place and serves out its purpose and expires, you know, according to schedule. But since we're going to be looking at the core area, let's, and we're going to be spending the time and effort and money to do this, let's look at the whole area and see if it makes sense to do one new TIF with a fresh life.
I've got two more questions. Okay?
Okay, Dennis?
All right. So I totally agree with that concept, probably because this is a new time and things have changed. And so, of course, realigning it makes sense. So I looked at the map of the proposed area, existing area in the study boundary. And I want to suggest, since it's not decided completely yet, that I think it would be a great advantage to the city in future planning, not only to, you know, maintain the TIF area that's in the current Boneyard Plan, but I think that we need to expand the TIF district toward the west, along Boneyard Creek to Lincoln Avenue. Because this is a certain part of the Boneyard that has a great potential for bringing, to making a multiple-use pathway into the downtown from the university area. And we're not going to be able to fund any future studies for that area without TIF money to support the study, just as it was important to have that money to create the first Boneyard Creek Plan. And you have to think about this, the Boneyard Creek had been contemplated for reconstruction and redesign way back in 1970, and perhaps earlier. But I know that I have a study of the Boneyard with suggestions for improvements of the very section that we're doing now that come from 1970. You know, that's quite a long, that's 50 years ago. So why don't we be forward-thinking and consider the entire expanse of the Boneyard? So I would really recommend that the TIF be gerrymandered to include that section, the western section of the Boneyard.
I just want to respond to that, that staff's very aware of that, specifically as it's laid out as in the signage and wayfinding study, as a goal to create that linkage to campus. However, and we've talked about it, not only in preparing to this point and studying the new TIF, as well as in the context of the MTD agreement. The concern is really disruption of the neighborhood. And with regard to TIF districts, there's specific statutory reasons why we need to avoid neighborhoods. And the problem is, when we just look at the map of what properties along Springfield or Main get you to Lincoln, there's not much you can do without disrupting residential properties. And if you read the contract, there's specific provisions in there that if we trigger, if we displace too many homes or we include too many residents in the TIF district, it's going to require an additional level of study, which may be justifiable and good if you set out to do a residential TIF. But we're not setting out to do that. So at this time, we're trying to avoid that expense and that level of study that's required.
So I appreciate your comment. However, couldn't we study the right-of-way of the creek itself without including, I mean, because I understand that the city does indeed have a right-of-way along the creek bed. And certainly, we've shown that in the fast, a path can be created at the creek bed level, or, you know, or there can be cantilevered paths, you know, from the edge of the right-of-way into the creek and over the creek, just as there are in Lansing, Michigan, over the river there. So let's not eliminate it just because we, okay, I totally agree, we won't involve residential areas, but...
Diane?
Just a couple of logistical questions. You're going to define the proposed new TIF area. Will you come back to council for approval of that before proceeding with the redevelopment study?
That would be our recommendation. In fact, we probably ought to have a strategy session even before we get to that final boundary to talk about our options.
Okay. It was difficult to tell from the map in the packet, but I noticed, I think I noticed that it's, your proposed area stops at Vine Street, which means it would not include the block north here. Was there a reason for that?
Yes, the reason is that we anticipate moving forward on the block north on a much more accelerated timeframe.
Okay.
We're currently negotiating with a group to represent the city in response to the RFQ that was issued. And we hope to be bringing that issue to council within two weeks and to begin moving forward right away on the future marketing and ideally redevelopment of the site beginning, you know, within a year of that. This TIF district wouldn't even take effect most likely until
Oh, you're right.
I guess, beginning of 2017.
Okay.
If I'm counting correctly. And starts and beginnings of TIF can be tricky, so. But we're talking a ways out. And in one sense, as the concept of de-TIF-ing comes up, because TIF II is actually rather old. It's near the end of its life, even though it doesn't end until 23 years. So but that's because we normally give property tax abatements over a 10-year period. So we're already starting to eat into that. But we think that the trade-off is, it's better to move forward now with the life of TIF II we have on the block north, rather than to wait any longer.
And are you looking at a property tax TIF or a sales tax TIF, or both for this?
Sales tax TIFs are no longer authorized by the state. So it'll be purely property tax.
And lastly, I'm very much looking forward to your TIF 101 class, because there's a lot we all need to learn as well as about the enterprise zones. So the sooner we can get a study session on that scheduled, the better. I know staff is stretched to the limit at this point, but I'm looking forward to taking that course.
We'd be happy to share with you some of our knowledge on that.
Mike?
So just kind of following up on what Diane said about the block north of here. So what you're saying is you're hoping to, and I brought this up, we had a discussion about this block when the Mass Transit District was here a few weeks ago. And you'd indicated the same kind of comments, that we were on a faster track with someone. Is there any reason not to include this, maybe assuming that, or hedging our bets, saying, gee, maybe this doesn't come to fruition? Because we've already been through one cycle of a possible development, and that didn't come to fruition. So is there a reason to exclude that block this time?
Well, I...
I guess what's the harm in including it?
I, we, I guess we approached this from a perspective of, we wanted to offer a sense of certainty of the situation moving forward. This is a study area, so we can amend it moving forward. We could include it. But I think we'd proceed down with the same expectation. We don't want to change the status for the incentives offered to the site if we are seriously approaching a development phase.
Sure.
However, if that gets backed off, then it would make sense at that point, certainly.
Yeah, I mean, I would just think that you could look at it as one of these situations where, gee, we hope the development comes to fruition. But if it doesn't, we've got it in this study here, and we can include that. It just kind of makes sense to me. My other question, well, it's twofold. I'm staring at this map, and I've been, I should have driven by here today to figure it out. You've got a little rectangle in the middle of the map that says "out."
Mm-hmm.
What is that?
That's the Stratford apartment building.
Oh, very good. So that's developed.
Right.
My final question is, I ate at the restaurant there. It was pretty good.
I did, too.
My final question is, so there's talk about, okay, re-defining the boundaries, taking portions of TIF II and maybe some stuff that's not TIF II, I'm not sure. Is it a legal requirement to redefine the boundaries of this TIF at this point? Is there no, are there no further extensions available by state law?
There are no further extensions authorized by, well, you could always go to the legislature and ask for it, but I don't think you'll get it.
So the only way to extend this TIF is to redraw the boundaries?
To start new, which means you got to qualify the area and meet all the statutory requirements. And for purposes of this map, the study area is just that. It's a study area. I can guarantee you the boundaries will change for various reasons, including qualification issues. But if you're going to do a new TIF, it'll be a new boundary, a new TIF, complying with the current provisions of the law.
So just playing devil's advocate, some folks might just say, well, you're redrawing the lines to just continue the TIF.
You're using TIF as an investment strategy. In an older area town, you would have hoped by now you could have taken care of everything. Urbana's not the only one in this boat. All communities with a sizable, older urban core, they're always a challenge. I don't think anybody really understood at the time the TIF Act was set up in the late 1970s. It really sounded like a great idea. It was spreading across the United States. And everybody thought if we set this up for the whole downtown area, we're going to have a brand-spanking new downtown in 23 years. Well, it didn't happen. A lot was accomplished, but there's still a lot more to be done. So downtowns are a challenge, and they'll be a constant challenge, and it'll be long-term.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. If there's no more discussion, we still need a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Dennis?
So I suggest we approve Resolution 2014-07-042, approving and authorizing the execution of a contract for professional services with Peckham, Geithen, Albers, and Weitz Incorporated for the 2014-15 fiscal year for the creation of a study on TIFs.
It's been moved by Roberts and seconded by Ammons. Is there any further discussion?
One more question.
Dennis?
And would this become, this new TIF would be TIF V? Or what would it be, would it have a new name, or would it retain an old name?
I don't like to use the numbers. I like to give it a name. So think about what you want to call it. Central area, downtown, whatever.
There you go. Okay, that's a consultation event right there.
Okay, all in favor of the motion to send this to council with recommendation for approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Next up is ordinance number 2014-07-069, an ordinance approving a second amendment to an agreement for use of right-of-way with Gargoyle Technologies Inc., DPA, Volo Broadband. Bill Gray?
Thank you. Similar to two weeks ago, but different areas, Gargoyle Technologies is requesting revisions to their license agreement in the packets. Are those revisions, and in particular, additional areas for coverage? And that's shown in Exhibits I, J, and K. So what you're asked this evening is to consider sending this to council for approval to amend the license agreement. This would be the second amendment.
So moved.
It's been moved by Madigan, seconded by Smythe, to send this to council with recommendation for approval. Is there any discussion?
It'll be short. I just have one request. Can we label these streets in a typeface that's readable?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think I had one question, too. The street, I forget what the name of it is, that runs right along 74, doesn't appear to be in the city limits. Is that part of this agreement?
Any street outside the city limits would not be part of the license agreement.
Volo Timber Right-of-Way 04. It's East Canyon Road. It's just, it's, okay. I mean, it's in the, it says in exhibit, but I guess if it's in there and it's not in the city, it's not part of our agreement.
Correct.
Peter Folk is in the audience and probably could answer that for you.
Okay. That was a good enough answer? Okay.
Correct.
Any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, ordinance number 2014-07-070, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, FY 2014-15 Irrigation System Research Grant. Scott Tess?
Good evening. This ordinance is a budget amendment to accept $3,000 in grant funds from the Illinois Sustainable Technology Center. This is part of their Billion-Gallon Water Challenge. That's their effort to conserve a billion gallons of water across the state of Illinois. As part of that, they have a sponsored research grant program. And we've been awarded $3,000 to install some irrigation controls on a couple of our automatic, or automated irrigation control, or irrigation systems, Philo Road and the Viaduct on North Vine. We have a small contribution, mostly our match is in-kind or staff time. And we have a small amount of actual cash match in this grant program to repair some broken irrigation lines. We're anticipating that the irrigation controls will result in less irrigation water used in our irrigation systems. And if that turns out to be the case, that'll be good evidence that we should install such controls at all of our automated irrigation locations. And it'll be a new, a new piece of evidence for that type of technology in the Illinois context as well, which is why ISTC was interested in our proposal. Staff is recommending approval of the amendment, and take any questions you might have.
Any questions for Scott? Charlie?
And so you or somebody in the staff will be collecting data, or will they be collecting? You'll be collecting the data?
Sure. We get water bills on specific meters for just these irrigation lines. So we'll be monitoring the actual water consumption, and we'll compare it to previous years for the same locations. And then also on Philo, because there are separate irrigation lines and meters on both sides of the road, we'll be comparing a test site on one side of the road and an existing conditions or control site on the other side of the road. So we'll have both a comparison in time, and also a comparison in real time to the other side of the road. And that's the results that will be featured in, you know, our report, our final report to ISTC as part of the grant.
Yeah, Dennis?
What's the cross-street at Philo where the study will be taking place?
It'll be from Colorado to, I'm trying to think of it, just before Philo turns north.
Oh, Florida.
Florida, yes. Florida to Colorado.
And that's, that's the landscaped section?
Correct.
Okay, Charlie?
I'll move to send this to council with recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Smythe and seconded by Roberts to send this to council with recommendation for approval. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next up is ordinance number 2014-07-071, an ordinance amending Schedule J of Section 23-183 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times in certain streets, Ash Street. Bill Gray?
Thank you. The Ash Street reconstruction project is completed. The street width accommodates parking on one side of the street. We want to, Traffic Commission heard recommendations for prohibiting parking on the east side of the street. The ordinance before you this evening is to do just that between University Avenue north to the property line of the sanitary district and owned property, which the Park District leases for their access to a maintenance storage facility. And... And Commission recommends approval of this ordinance.
Mike?
Yeah, you know, this was heard before the Traffic Commission, and I don't know whether this was anticipated or not when the road was reconstructed, but after a thorough hearing at the Commission, it was determined that this was the prudent thing to do, and it was not going to inhibit any of the folks in the neighborhood in terms of parking. So that there should be no real issues there. There is one house, remind me, Bill, I think there is one house that's for sale in that neighborhood, and there was going to be a timing issue there to try to work out with the sale that, that the parking restriction would coincide with the sale to help out maybe the one property. And you can elaborate on that. I don't remember exactly what the issue was, but, but that would be the only issue. No one else would really be inconvenienced in any way by doing this, and it definitely helps out the Park District and the sanitary district.
Carol?
I'd like to make a recommendation to, for approvals to send this to City Council.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to send this ordinance to council with recommendation for approval. Is there any other discussion? Diane, did you have anything? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Stay there. Next up is ordinance number 2014-07-072. An ordinance amending Schedule F of Section 23-83 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code designating one-way streets and alleys. Anderson Street between Florida Avenue and Pennsylvania Avenue.
Again, the Traffic Commission at its July 8th meeting heard staff discussion and other input on this. The last three months of the school year, Wiley School had tried out a Anderson one-way northbound situation to help make for a safer, more orderly drop-off of students, pickup of students in and around the school on Anderson Street. The, there was lots of viewing of this operation, and all parties felt that this worked very well. And the school district is asking that we would memorialize this. Again, these would be temporary one-way situations only during school days, only during the morning when parents and others would be dropping off students in the evening, picking up students. And this is between Florida Avenue and Pennsylvania Avenue. So, Commission is recommending approval of this ordinance.
Any questions for Bill? Dennis?
So, Bill, I understand that, that one of the reasons why this came up was there was an accident and a student was hit by a parent. So, I can understand the safety reasons. So, so when these temporary barricades are in place, is there going to be like a traffic, a school monitor or something also at this location, helping to direct traffic that may not be aware that it's, all of a sudden they got caught in the wrong time to come down Anderson? And how, if you wanted to go southbound and you were coming down Anderson to get to, I guess, what is it, Florida? What street would you be detoured to? Are there going to be detour signs as well?
The residents on the west side, as I understand it, are supportive of this action. So, I'm not aware that they would pull out of their driveway and head south during this period of time. I think they all complied with that one-way northbound. They are aware of that. The barricades and signage are pulled out during these two one-hour periods by school staff that takes care of that. If you're southbound on Anderson and you approach Pennsylvania, you'll clearly see the "Do Not Enter" sign with the barricade. So, you physically would have to drive over the barricade to go south. So, there is no marked detour route. It's more or less intuitive that you make a right or a left to get to your destination, Florida, or what have you to the south. So, again, there was no public pushback as to that southbound traveler, if you will. I think the residents on the west side pretty much were supportive and felt that this was a better situation to have these temporary one-way northbound. There is legwork each day of a school day for staff to pull out and erect the signage. But the school district is on board, and they're willing to do that each and every school day.
Okay. Diane?
I move we send ordinance number 2014-07-072 to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved, moved by Marlin and seconded by Madigan to send this to council with recommendation for approval. Charlie?
Yeah, and I'd just simply point out that Leo School has been doing this for some time. And, oh, and the middle school does this as well, so it's, it's sort of a proven solution. And school staff and volunteers take care of it, so.
Any further discussion?
Well, just one final point. I think Wiley, down the road, the school district does plan to make a modification onto the grounds, but it's way down the list for the school district, given their other facility needs. So, this is a really good temporary solution, which, you know, may be 10 years, but it's a great solution.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next up is Resolution Number 2014-07-041R. A resolution authorizing the entry into and execution of an agreement between the City of Urbana, Illinois and the Community Foundation of East Central Illinois. Mike Brunt?
Evening. This is our resolution to create a mechanism for citizens to donate to our Legacy Tree Program. So, we worked with the Community Foundation of East Central Illinois, and we're looking to set up our initial mechanism through them. Jim was very kind and working hard to get the wordage correct that, in our agreement. So, we're bringing it to council for approval.
Charlie?
What's the customary fee that they charge?
That's a good question, and it's floating, but it is 1.3% on a four-quarter moving average. So, this year, it's effective about 1.23%, is what it would be this year.
And following up on that, so, and they periodically change that and let us know what it is, right?
Right.
And we have our, we have the ability to pull out. I guess, so the follow-up on this is, is this a mechanism, you know, we're looking at public art doing something like this. I know we've had some other needs potentially with UPTV. Is this potentially, is this a trial run potentially usable for other programs within the city?
Libby, do you want to address that?
Yeah, we've been looking at some different fundraising models. So, working with the Community Foundation is one good example. And then we're also looking at a platform called Citizen Investor for some other projects. So, we might, might look at both of those. And I think even on our website, you can donate with a, like a PayPal account that we have. We just can't solicit through the city, so.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions for Mike? Mike?
I just want to commend you for following through on this. I think this is a great way to fund this program, and hopefully folks will step up with voluntary donations and make it all work. So, kudos for the good work.
Diane?
Well, Charlie has show and tell, but I'll move Resolution Number 2014-07-041R, which is the resolution authorizing entry into the, an execution of an agreement between the City of Urbana and the Community Foundation of East Central Illinois.
Second.
It's been moved by Marlin and seconded by Smythe to send this to council with recommendation for approval. Charlie?
I was just going to say, there's a brochure on your desk. Mike didn't mention it, but it's pretty sharp looking. And how are you going to be distributing this? And what's your plan to use, how do you, how are you going to use this?
Well, we've got, we've got a number of ideas, but certainly we're going to be handing them out at city facilities, the farmer's market. It's my intention to talk, when I talk to public groups, to bring Legacy Tree information. And we have several mechanisms to have volunteers work for the program. So, one that we, we've just secured basically is the Master Gardeners Program. So, the University of Illinois Extension Master Gardeners and Master Naturalists, we're going to be using to go around town searching for these trees. And I'm assuming that it won't be a problem for them to solicit this information as well. Also, the Champaign County Design and Conservation Foundation has agreed to push the Legacy Tree Program and to solicit funding for the program, and this material will be used, will be given to them to use as well.
Carol, did you have something?
I did. I just wanted to clarify something Charlie said. There's, there is a fee associated on each donation, which is how the Community Foundation actually covers staff time. Is that how?
I believe it's on the amount that's sitting in the fund.
It's a percentage of the amount in the fund. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? I noticed you're pretty confident in this passage because you already have Community Foundation of East Central Illinois listed in your brochure. So, I guess we'd better approve it next week, or we'll have to reprint the, it's a limited distribution.
Yes, it is.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. Another one from Mike. An ordinance amended Urbana City Code Chapter 25 Legacy Tree Program, Section 25-65, consent.
This is a change in language that Jim pointed out a while back, and I thought this was an opportune time to make the change. And that is, what we didn't have in the initial ordinance was the ability to maintain Legacy Tree status on property if that property was to change hands. So, Jim pointed that, that out and created the language to put into our ordinance. So, it will retain the Legacy Tree status when the property changes hands from one owner to the other. And the new owner then would have to request a delisting of the tree to take it off the Legacy Tree listing.
Questions for Mike. Carol?
So, if I purchased a house and I didn't want, I wanted to cut that tree down?
Yes.
I have to request permission when I purchase a house and the land?
The, the process is you have to request a permit to delist the tree. The city doesn't keep you from removing it. It just forces a process. It's a 45-day process that allows the community, the neighborhood, to know that the tree is being requested to be removed. And then we have a tree commission meeting, so people can talk about how they feel about the tree or the tree removal. And at the end of that process, the homeowner is free to remove that tree.
Oh, I think that's a little difficulty factor for me, so thank you.
Diane?
Remind me, how is a property owner, someone who purchased a property on which there's a Legacy Tree, are they notified of that in the sale papers, or how, how does one know you have a Legacy Tree on your property?
Well, we will have it publicized in a number of ways. We have, we will have our Legacy Trees on a public web map, so they can all be seen. The homeowner certainly will know that, that selling the property, that there's a Legacy Tree there. If, as funding allows, we'll have plaques that will be out on, adjacent to the Legacy Trees. Now, you know, I don't know that the city goes as far as trying to seek out new homeowners and notifying them, but every Legacy Tree owner, property owner receives a publication information annually. So, at some point in that timeframe of them owning the property, if nobody told them they had a Legacy Tree, they would find out from us because we'd be mailing them information.
Mike?
So, yeah, I kind of had a similar question of Diane. So, there's no, so there's no recording with the county recorder? There's nothing that attaches to the, to the deed? There's no requirement that a Realtor's listing disclose a Legacy Tree, correct?
That's correct. We looked into recording them at the county recorder's office, but, and maybe Jim can speak to this. There were some complications with that.
Well, I'm sure. I'm sure. Yeah. No, I'm, I'm not saying, I'm just, for point of clarifications, I, I figured that was the case. So, I mean, I'm kind of with Diane. I, I, I get that, what you're trying to do here. But, but what you're saying though is you, there is a process to go ahead and remove the tree if the new property owner goes through that process. And, and so are you saying that there is nothing stopping the property owner who goes through that process, even though there's resistance, there's nothing stopping the property, the new property owner from removing a tree?
That's correct. That's what we, we, the council voted on the ordinance to be a voluntary program. And in fact, we can't go on to private property and demand that they have the tree be a Legacy Tree. It's voluntary. We have to have private property owner permission or approval before we can go forward with the process if the tree is nominated.
Well, I can support this as long as there's a way for the new property owner to decide, "I don't want to participate," and it's not an onerous process, and it doesn't sound to me like it is.
Carol?
Maybe Jim will answer this. I think that the concern I have is not necessarily for the tree necessarily, but as an owner of the property I'm purchasing, I think the requirement should actually be reversed. That the city, if the property changes hands, and it is recorded with the Recorder of Deeds, when property is sold for tax purposes, that the city's responsibility would be to invite the new owner into the program as opposed to making the new owner have to get a permit, have to face people who are tree conservationists. I think that's a little bit backwards in the process of me purchasing a home and making me have to go through the process of 45 days and permitting, as opposed to the reverse, and the city inviting the new owners and educating them about the Legacy Program and asking them to continue to participate.
Well, in, in my opinion, it defeats the initial purpose of this Tree Preservation Ordinance, which was to save our trees from development. So, we have a lot of excellent developers in the community that come in and they work around their landscapes and trees and try to preserve that in development. But there's times that trees are in their way, and they want to take the trees down. So, we didn't want to mandate Tree Preservation on private property. We wanted to allow it to be more of an awareness program where the public will go out and help us find these trees and make the community and the developers aware of our trees. So, when they come into the, the community, they, they will work to develop around them. So, if a developer buys property, much like what started this whole process over on Race Street with a historic 200-year-old oak tree on the property, and it's a Legacy Tree, and they come in and buy the property, and all of a sudden it's not. So, it, it limits our ability to preserve. The initial intent of the ordinance was to help preserve these trees. Now, they can still remove that tree if they want to. They just have to go through a process to listen to what the neighborhood thinks of that tree. The neighborhood's been around that tree for a lot longer than a new property owner has. So, we want that new property owner to just listen to what the neighborhood has to say about the tree. They may say, "Hey, go ahead. We don't really care about the tree. You're free to do what you want." They also may say, "You know, our children grew up with this tree. This tree has a lot of history to this neighborhood, and we would like you to know that." Then they can remove that tree after that process, but that's the idea behind the process, is to hear the public out so the neighborhood can speak about that tree. Our urban forest is for the community. It's, it's the community's trees and more than, you know, we want people to look at it like, "It's my tree," or "That's his tree."
Jim, could you add some detail?
I, I'm not going to address Carol's issue because that's a policy question. Who, who should have the burden? And at this point, the ordinance adopted by the City Council has created, you know, who bears the burden of either opting out or opting in? So, that's a policy question. It's not a legal question. But I would like to clarify one point. The question about the new homeowner opting out so they can take down their tree, if you read the draft of the provision, it's not an issue of whether a homeowner wants to take out a tree or not. It's just a matter of, for any reason, maybe they just don't want to be part of a Legacy Tree Program because they're angry at the city or whatever. They have, they have the right to opt out of the program. But as Mike indicated, there, there is a process, very much like wanting to do something with an air conditioner, like you all discussed last week. Now, that's not a guarantee, but here, a homeowner going through the process, as Mike indicated. The neighborhood theoretically, by public notice, is put on notice, and indicated, the neighborhood theoretically, by public notice, is put on notice, and either they choose to come and voice their views, and maybe the homeowner decides, you know what, that makes sense, or the homeowner says, no, I want to delist it. Then it's delisted, delisted.
Okay, Dennis?
And maybe this is Jim's question, it's more for you than for Mike. It was asked whether it would be appropriate to have the fact that there's a Legacy Tree on the property made available when the house is being listed, but I suppose that whatever is mentioned about a house that's being listed is up to the Realtors?
Realtor and the owner unless there is some statutory requirement. I mean, you could adopt an ordinance, but I think what ends up happening is now you're imposing upon Realtors to ferret out who of their listings have Legacy Trees, and I think that's an undue burden on them. The information is public, will be public through the website and other, and as Mike indicated, the homeowner will be notified with whatever the next mailing about Legacy Trees.
And in some communities and some neighborhoods which have historic homes in the first place, or homes of, you know, 100 years old or such, which is sometimes preferable for people who are coming into the, into the, into the city to locate a home like that as opposed to a very modern home, it might be that having a Legacy Tree on the property could be a selling point just as well as it might be a detriment for some people.
Absolutely. Some communities have rather significant fees for removal of any tree, legacy or otherwise. The community I came from, it was on an average of, you want to remove your tree, you pay the city 2,000 bucks to remove your tree, to allow you to remove your tree. This program does not provide anything of the sort.
Any other questions for Mike? Dennis?
Well, I would just make a motion then, I think we, unless there's other conversation, I would move that we send ordinance 2014-07-073, amending the City Code Chapter 25 on the Legacy Tree Program to the City Council with approval.
It's been moved by Roberts, seconded by Smythe, to send this ordinance to council with recommendation for approval. Was any further discussion? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries. Last up is ordinance number 2014-07-074, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, FY 2014-15, Windsor Road reconstruction, Philo to Race. Bill Gray.
Thank you. Couple of months ago, May 5th, City Council approved a resolution wherein we have an agreement with IDOT to allow federal dollars to be used for our Windsor Road reconstruction project. This is Windsor Road between Fallow Road and Race Street. There are dollars set aside, up to $3 million, to pay the 50% share for construction and utility, relocated, related expenses. The city is, has local let that project, it's typically when federal dollars are involved, the letting or bid award process goes through the state, but the timing of those letting dates did not work well for us wanting to expedite this process, project, so we and IDOT agreed to do a local letting. Since we're the awarding entity versus IDOT, we're paying the contractor for all the expenses, so the $3 million is going to come to the city through a reimbursement process. We have other grants in public works that have reimbursement processes too. In order to have the dollars available, then we need to show that we'll be receiving $3 million, or up to $3 million, I should say, and this budget amendment ordinance then reflects that and shows the revenue and the expenditure line items where this will happen. So, you're urged to recommend this for, to the next council meeting for approval. We did receive very good bids, three bidders, the low bidder for construction was a little less than $4.1 million. Leaving contingency dollars assigned for any and all construction projects, the actual federal dollars that may be used may be more in the order of around $2.2 million, that's an estimate now. So, again, it's a 50% match, it's not, we get $3 million, it's on a matching basis, so, but still, it's nice to have an upper limit cushion like we have, but we should be far under the $3 million because of the favorable bids we received a few weeks ago.
Questions for Bill? Charlie?
I assume the state is good for their match?
They are.
Okay. On that, on that note, not to stand, not to stand in the way of getting this road done, I move to send this to council with recommendation for approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Smythe and seconded by Marlin to send this to council with recommendation for approval. Further discussion? Mike?
I actually have a serious question, following up on what Charlie just mentioned. Not that you weren't serious, but what is the, what is the current timeframe for state reimbursement on road projects? Do we know what the cycle is right now?
Usually it's less than two months.
Okay.
Yes.
And remind me, the state law is?
Oh, boy.
Yeah, never mind.
I'm not sure about that now.
But after, if they exceed that time period, they owe us interest, correct?
Yes.
And my assumption is we have the, we have the funds to float the state?
Correct.
If we wouldn't have to go and borrow the money on the market?
No. Again, this is a project that's going to be starting this year and finishing next year, and we have a good idea about how many hundred thousand dollars of expenditures each month will happen, but once we start, and the contractor typically will ask a request for payment once a month, so, you know, at the worst case, it's two or three months, it may be $500,000 or $600,000. It sounds like a lot of money, but from a cash flow standpoint, we should be fine.
Right. Okay. Well, that was my only concern, is that we don't have to go out and borrow the money to cover the state when they don't pay.
No, I'm not aware that we have to do that. Again, think about it, we have $2.8 million in the bank, so even if we use that, you know, this first couple of payments will get reimbursed by the state, and then we'll be able to continue forward, so it should be fine.
Any other questions? Diane?
So, the final total estimated cost is $4.3 million? Is that what you said?
Yeah, we're correct. If we're looking at a contingency too, that's for construction now, yes. There's other expenses, but just for construction, it'll be around $4.3.
So, what's the total?
Well, right now, we think it would be maxing out about $4, maybe $4.8 or so, $4.7 million, so we've also received other monies, $250,000 from the state already, so that's on top of this, these federal dollars, and so really... So, really, the, we think that even though we bonded $2.8 million, potentially, we may have $300,000 to $500,000 unspent. And I'm not sure if we talked about this a week or two ago, but so, say, next spring or in budget preparation time, we will be coming to council, hopefully we'll have a better idea what that amount will be, but somewhere between $300,000 or $500,000, we have the decision of, do we want to pay some of that debt service, that 10-year payment a little sooner? Do we want to use some of that money for road maintenance, neighborhood street type, or do we want to do some combination thereof? So, those are things that Craig Schonkeller and I will be discussing with Rittenfield and the mayor, and ultimately with you, as to what we would like to do with that, what we hope will be excess bond money.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Seeing no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.